September the eighth at hopefully our afternoon session four P M. And if I could start with a roll call.
Yes, let me just make sure I'm unmuted, which I am. So Chair Brassfield.
President.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Commissioner Milich.
Here.
And Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Thank you.
Nice to see all those smiling faces on this humid day. If we could start with consent item, I think we only have one item with the minutes. Any comments?
There was just one. This is Hudson. The vote, if you add up the number of people on the first vote, it's seven people, even though it says six. If I do my math right, that was the only comment. That's the only thing I would change. Under the item number two, I moved to approve. I submitted.
Actually.
With that one change.
I think, do we have any other changes? And do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Chair Vice Chair Freeman, call for any kind of comments? If not, I'll call for the Michael. Did you have a comment?
No.
I'll call for the vote if you would.
Sure. Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed or Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
And lastly, Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passed. Next item is any public comment not related to any issues being discussed today. Do we have any of those?
Somebody needs to announce the phone number.
So not yet, but let me go ahead and read for the public audience, the phone number. It should be showing on a chyron on the bottom of your screen. And the phone number is eight three one five eight two six five zero zero. So once again, the call in number for public comment is eight three one five eight two six to five hundred.
I don't see anything in the bottom of the page, Kim. It maybe it only goes to the other audience?
Right.
Yeah, it goes to the YouTube live video stream. Which is not something that you're working at unless you have a third or second screen up that shows that on your own personal computer.
We've seen them in the in the previous meetings, but not this one. Thank you.
So Chair Brassfield, I'm not seeing any public comment. I will make sure to interrupt if somebody calls in as we move on to the next item.
I appreciate that. The next item would be the appeal request for our eight sixteen Lily Street. I assume we have a staff presentation.
We do. Christopher Schmidt will be making the presentation this afternoon.
Hello, Chris.
All right. Well, thank you very much, planning commissioners. Again, my name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a senior associate planner for the city. And I've been working with the applicant and the neighbors on this project. So yes, we are looking at an appeal of the single story addition at eight sixteen Lily Street. The staff recommendation is to deny the appeal, which would approve the project. Just some background information, the site is zone R one five and is has a general plan designation, low density residential, and it contains an existing single family home. It's in the new Monterey neighborhood. So just further background, so this is a project that typically is eligible for administrative approval. Back in September of twenty nineteen, the project was approved without sending the required notices. And the story poles were not installed. In June, the neighbor next door at eight twenty four had contacted staff to ask about noticing, and that's when we realized there was an oversight. So we issued a stop order, a stop work order, had the story poles constructed and sent those notices for administrative approval. With those approvals, the neighbors do have the opportunity to request an A R C review, which that neighbor did do. In August, the A R C approved that project and they found no unreasonable impact based on some of the concerns from the neighbor, which I will go into. And I used this slide as kind of a learning opportunity for the A R C to explain what the noticing requirements are. So basically, we require construction of story poles for architectural review permits that are that involve construction of new buildings, increases in heights, or additions of floor area. Likewise, I think the the planning commission is more familiar with second story additions because we receive more of those types of appeals. And those typically require increasing as well. So further background, I just wanted to refer to this. If we have any questions about the development standards, we have this slide available to return to. So here we see the existing project site in orange. I've highlighted the existing building. And here we see the existing building on the left and the addition, proposed addition on the right, the addition in purple and the deck on the I guess that's the northwest northeastern side. So it's a existing, the existing home is pretty modestly sized, eight hundred and seventy four square feet, and they're adding four hundred and seventy seven square feet. And here you can see the home. And the elevations. So the top, top left, we have the rear showing the whole of the addition. On the right is the north. If you're facing from the street, it'd be the left side. This is the side that's closest to the neighbor. On the bottom left, you see the front. Really, the only change there is there's a new cable at the front there that that extends just a few feet above the existing home. And then bottom right is the furthest side from the from the neighbor who has appealed. Here we see the conceptual renderings. The top is the view from the street where the bottom is has viewed from the rear yard or from the garage. So there were impacts identified by the neighbor at eight twenty four Lily Street. This is the home on the northern side, and I will show a photo of it. The neighbor, Mrs. Badan, she has concern for loss of view of trees on the south side from her second level deck. And she sent another photo to me from her dining room. Also concerned for privacy and concern for noise impacts due to construction while she's required to be sheltered in place. So this is her home on the northern side of the property. So on the far, on the right side is the project site. The two story building is the appellant's home at eight twenty four. This is the the view from, excuse me, this is not from her second level deck. This is from her dining room. These are the views from her second level deck. So if you can see the trees in the rear behind the story pole, or rather, the orange netting, these are the, this is the view loss that Mrs. Badan is concerned for. And then these are photos from her rear yard. And then this, this photo was provided by the the property owner's representative. This, this, his intent was to show that the neighbor does have a bay view. And if you note, I'll go back to the last, last few images. This view points towards the bay, whereas the view that that Mrs. Bitten Dan is concerned for is kind of to the southeastern direction. So they're completely different views, kind of a ninety degree right angle difference. Of this, this view. Anyway. Some additional photos provided by the applicants. This is a view of Mrs. Badan's second story deck. As viewed from their rear yard. And you'll also note here, at this point in in construction, the applicant had already built basically the foundation. So they were already underway. Just wanted to point that out. This is a view from the interior. I think that the point here was just to show that these, these two windows on this south elevation are basically right next to a stair. So there's not really any, a, any view or privacy concern to those windows. This may actually be one of the windows that Ms. Badan provided the photo today. We can have her clarify. Anyway, this is the last photo from the applicant. It's just showing the other neighbor on on the south side. Okay, so moving on to the findings that are required for an architectural review permit. I believe the planning commission is familiar with these, so I will keep it brief. But essentially, the air staff and the A R C were able to make these findings. The project was appropriately sized and cited. It is single family residential in character, compatible with the surrounding area. Again, there were view and privacy impacts that were identified. None of these impacts were views of the bay. The construction impact is a temporary impact only during the time period of construction. And both staff and the A R C found that the project does not unreasonably impair views of privacy. The next finding is that the project is consistent with city plans and design guidelines, which staff and the A R C was able to make that finding. It's a small addition to a small, single family home. Like I mentioned, it's fairly modest in size. And lastly, the exterior finish colors, materials, landscaping, lighting, and all other exterior finishes, exterior features are appropriate. Staff and the A R C agreed with this finding as the addition is proposed to match. So again, the staff recommendation is to deny the appeal and approve the project. I am available for questions. I believe the both the appellant and applicant have called in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Chris?
Yes, I have one question. In the applicants, in the appellant's letter, she requests a delay of construction so that she can sell her home. And the home appears to be, I drove by today, newly painted and a different color than the one shown in the picture you just gave us. Is the, is the house on the market now?
I don't know if it was. I've had a couple of status update checks with the, with the neighbor to ask how far they were. I know that she's, she's begun her process of of finding a new place to live and selling her home.
We could probably ask her if she comes on.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, I had a question for Christopher. Could you clear me up on the concern she had about tree removal?
Yes, it, it wasn't concern for any trees being removed. It was, it was concern for the loss of view of the trees. So no trees are being proposed for removal. She would, you'll see in these story pole images, the trees at the rear would basically be, or I guess, south of her property would basically be blocked by the addition.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chris, have we gone through all the the city's requirements from the local planning process? What is viable in a consideration for an appeal, et cetera?
Um, so I think, I think the question, I, as I understand it, is, are, what are, what are the options that the planning commission has? And whether they want to consider requiring changes to the plans or or I think we discussed with the A R C and with staff, whether the commission or the committee has the authority to delay the construction. And we determined that was not possible. Changes to the design is is possible, but it is not recommended by staff.
Okay, I appreciate that. But since part of the applicant is, one of the issues is that with the notice issue, do we have any problems there? And I think the city attorney might be able to answer that if she's available.
The, the noticing has been cured and corrected, so we're, we're fine.
Okay, thank you. That's, just wanted to make sure it was checked off on considerations. If we could have the applicant make a presentation, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Before we get started with that, I'm just going to share with the public, the call in number is eight three one five eight two six five zero zero. Once again, the phone number is eight three one five eight two six five zero zero. After I call the last four digits of your phone number, if you could move away from your TV or the YouTube livestream because it garbles the message when you try to speak. So we'll ask you to move away from your TV when you provide your public comment. We do have a caller on the phone, and so I will unmute. The last four digits are five five oh four. And now is the time to move away from your TV as I unmute you. You are on live with the planning commission, the last four digits. Yes, hi. You're on live with the planning commission. Please make your public comment.
This is Daniel Byrd.
Go ahead, Mr. Byrd. You can, the planning commission is listening. Mr. Byrd, you hear me? Because we can hear you if you would like to make a public comment.
Oh, sorry about that. I couldn't tell if I was on the line or not.
No problem.
This is Dan Byrd. Thank you for, uh, thank you for the commission for allowing me this time to meet as efficiently as possible during this time of pandemic requires. Our letter to the commission addressed the legal aspect of Miss Badan's appeal.
Kim, I think you need to unmute yourself.
Get the house in Monterey ready to live in full time. Charlie and Mary Ellen Financial Retirement Plan does not account for owning two houses well into twenty twenty one. And Miss Badan would like the city to force them to do, to do this, and their health condition makes it impossible to do the construction while living on site. The delays are putting clearly in Mary Ellen under significant stress and subjecting them to the risk of financial consequences because of sale of their house. The pandemic has now pushed back, and we have been notified that if construction is not being done, their current bid on the construction cost in Monterey will rise as well. One last thing we want to address, and Miss Badan's repeated implication of dishonesty on our part. We hired an architect, got a design, and applied for our permit. We followed all of the city's instructions to it, even making two changes, like adding fire sprinklers to get the project approved. Once we got the green light, we moved ahead. While we also wish the city had followed all of its procedures back from the fall of twenty nineteen, it is incorrect to blame or punish us for this oversight. It's also incorrect for Miss Badan to suggest that story polls and public comment in the fall would have pushed our project out to twenty twenty one. In fact, the timing of the outdoor work was to take only four to six weeks, but due to the onset of fall and winter weather, at these appeals, that time will now be eight to ten weeks. So in fact, the ongoing appeal is actually making the job two to three times longer than it would have been had the proper city notices gone out and had Miss Badan not appealed. We'd be scheduling sales dates for San Jose and moving dates to Monterey. We'll do everything we can to minimize disruption to our neighbors once we're able to get back on track, but we hope for a speedy resolution to this appeal. We hope that this process will now come to an end without further ability or waste of money on any other such appeal. Thank you for your time and consideration. This is Dan Byrd on behalf of Chair Lee Byrd and Mary Ellen Anken. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. I don't see anyone else on the phone, so I'm going to go ahead.
The last party in the conference. You will hear us until the conference begins.
Sorry about that. Let me go ahead and repeat the phone number. It's eight three one five eight two six five zero zero. Now is the time to call in if you're interested in the project of eight sixteen Lily Street. I've received another call. I will unmute that caller now. If you could move away from your TV. So the last four digits, five, six, six, nine are unmuted. You're on with the planning commission. If you could move away from your TV. Okay, I'll try a different number right now. Ms. Baden, you're on the phone right now with the planning commission? Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead and make your comments. Good afternoon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. So please make your comments to the planning commission.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear me now? So you can hear me. Okay, great. Let me mute myself on the computer. First, yes, I want to thank commissioners for hearing my request and need for this project. And I just want to clear up a few things. I don't consider this addition small. It is a large addition, being one third larger than the, than the size of the house. To clarify the painting, I painted the house upon move in and did many upgrades as it was in poor condition. And finally, to assuage your question, I have not begun the process of finding another home yet, nor am I planning on moving anytime soon as we are all sheltering as per Governor Newsom's request. So I really can't go anywhere even if I wanted to. So I'm virtually trapped. So first, I want you to know that I'm not asking for this project to be stopped. What I'm asking for and requesting today is an architectural revision of their plans so that their house extension and higher roof are not right in my line of sight on my upper porch. Also, we don't really have winter weather until at least February. So to me, that is inappropriate concern. But back to the extension and in my line of vision, no one came by to see it. No architect came by. No one came onto my upper porch to see how it blocks it, and it looks very different, as you can see from the photo. Also, for the original ARC meeting, I was not made aware that I even had a right to ask for a revision. No one told me I could. And that is what I'm requesting today for several reasons, which I will outline. I would like to stress that my intention is to come to an equitable agreement and resolution that works for all parties' highest goals and interests. For me, it's a primarily a privacy issue that infringes on my second story. Never mind that we're sheltering in a global pandemic with nowhere to go, or that the barrage of noise from this project will be cast upon the entire neighborhood for almost six months. I'm a writer by profession, so I bought this house specifically because it is in a peaceful, quiet neighborhood, and because I currently have utmost privacy looking out of every window. To clarify, you're showing two windows above my stairs. The one on the left is the same picture as the one I submitted from the dining room table, which will now be looking onto a roof and covering up almost the entire window. More importantly, me, I suffer from complex PTSD, which is a clinically diagnosed stress disorder coupled with high noise sensitivity. So it's very important to me, not only professionally, but also for my emotional and psychological well being. And I've been informed that they were planning on constructing a five hundred square foot add on. I would never have considered buying this house begin with and would have bought elsewhere. I personally feel that my mental health is more important than money. Due to an oversight by the planning department, the owners of eight sixteen were given their permit as of last September without the necessary posting of notices mailed out to the homeowners, which Chris acknowledged. Now that proper procedures have been followed, we have been notified. However, the owners were absolutely not forthcoming in their communications to me about this six month project from the beginning, nor did they ever alert any of us in the neighborhood. In fact, had I not taken it upon myself to talk to their contractor as they had started the foundation for the deck, I wouldn't have even known and probably would not have been informed until probably a week before, and that would have really severely exacerbated my PTSD condition. Plus, no one on their planning crew or the architect, as I said before, ever approached me to set, you know, to see what it would look like from my upper porch. And I don't feel this is fair to me. The woman from the A R C meeting came by the property several times to look at the property and the project, but she only went to the front. And she said the view, the small roof at the front was in keeping with the street, and she never bothered to go to the back of the house, which is where the main construction will be happening. To clarify, my house has a reverse floor plan, so the major living areas are on the second floor. My upper balcony is located off this main floor of my home, and that's why it presents a major privacy issue for me, as I sit out there quite frequently enjoying the view of the hills and trees and getting inspiration for my work. With the current architectural plan, this view will be completely blocked. Once again, my intention is not to stop this project from happening, but to ask for a further architectural revision. At the recent ARC meeting, the owners signed stated that their higher roof line would only partially hide the views. But this is not true, as you can clearly see from the But this is not true, as you can clearly see from the photos I have provided in which Chris showed you previously. Not only will the raised roof line completely obliterate my views, it will be right in my face as I intend to enjoy my only upstairs outdoor space. And more importantly, should I ever decide to sell my house, this higher roof line would be so close to the upper porch that it could seriously affect the resale value of my home. Again, this is a privacy issue. And in addition to the photos taken from my upper porch, I have also included a photo of the roof seen from my dining room, which you have now seen. If you have questions right now, please ask me. And I would definitely invite any of you to come by and stop and see, you know, pop into my home and see the situation in person, as long as you wear a mask. And thank you for your time and utmost consideration. I do hope we can all reach a mutually agreed-upon solution, which is fair to all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Baden? Any questions from the commission? Okay, then bring it.
We do have another caller, so I will go ahead and unmute the caller with the last digits, 5669. You are live with the Planning Commission. Please make your public comment. The telephone number ending in?
Good afternoon, Chair Brassfield, staff and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Matt Francois, and I'm a land use attorney with Ritan and Tucker. I represent Carley Byrd and Mary Ellen Eklington, the owners of 816 Lilly Street. The owners here are proposing a very modest addition to an existing single-story home in the new Monterey neighborhood. And the home is carefully designed to blend in with the neighborhood, both in terms of the roof line, as well as to serve as the owner's retirement home. I sent you a letter on September 1st. It should be in your packet and responds in full to all of the points raised in the appeal. I want to emphasize just a few of the key points from that letter. Before I do that, though, I want to thank all of you for your service to the community. Having served on a planning commission for several years and now on a city council, I understand the dedication and hard work that you put into considering each item that comes before you, and we truly appreciate your time and consideration. Like you, I judge development applications based on a project's conformity with established plans and standards. This project fully conforms with all of the city's planning and zoning standards. It's single-story, whereas a two-story structure is allowed. With the addition, the resulting home will be approximately 1,350 square feet when a 2,000-square-foot home is allowed by the zoning code. The addition would increase the height of the existing structure by a mere three and a half feet. And as I mentioned earlier, the project was carefully designed by an architect so that the roof line of the addition matches the roof line of the existing home and also carefully designed so that it remains a single-story. Both my clients are seniors with pre-existing health issues. And so it was important to them that they not have any stairs included in the addition that they would have to climb, you know, up or down to as a result of this project. Because the project conforms with all of your plans and standards, staff administratively approved the project in September 2019, and the Architectural Review Committee unanimously voted to approve the project at its August 5th meeting. I want to turn now to the points raised by the appeal, which are similar to the points that were considered and rejected by the ARC. First, as to impacts to views of off-site trees and hills. California law does not recognize a right to a private view shed. Even if it is, the views of off-site trees are not protected, nor will they be materially affected, as shown by the photos in your packet, some of which are taken from Ms. Baden's story deck. Importantly, Ms. Baden's ocean view will be completely unaffected by the project, as staff noted earlier. In addition, windows will be located and treated so as to ensure privacy between the two properties. Therefore, we believe this basis of impacts to views and privacy have not been substantiated by the appeal and are not a basis on which to grant the appeal. Second, the project will not resolve in any adverse impact related to construction noise. The project consists of a mere 477-square-foot addition. The foundation has already been laid. Once exterior work has been completed, the remaining work will take place inside the structure. The project was approved and conditioned on complying with standard construction hours to further minimize adverse noise impacts. Third, in accordance with state and local health orders, construction is an allowed activity, provided safety protocols are adhered to. The project contractor, K.R. Construction, a local construction firm, has the requisite safety protocols in place. In closing, the owners respectfully asked the Planning Commission to deny the appeal. The appeal lacks merit and appears intended solely to cause delay. The owners would like to complete construction so that they can relocate permanently to Monterey and commence their retirement as soon as possible. Thank you very much for your consideration of the owners' views on this matter. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, Kim, do we have any other callers?
All of the callers have currently spoken, so there's no new public comment. You can proceed with your deliberation.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission and any questions or comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Chair Latassa. I have a question for Kim regarding the visiting of sites like this. And I noticed somewhere, and I'm not sure where I saw it, where the, you know, the policy of the city is now definitely against sending boards and commissions into these private homes and decks in situations like this. And so, you know, I looked at all the photos. I went by the site and looked as well as I could. I do feel like I have a pretty good lay of the land. But can you just discuss briefly the city's policy regarding visiting the sites and, you know, having, you know, these people from the city actually go on private property?
Sure. So right now during COVID, the city of Monterey Planning Offices are closed to the public. We are not hosting public field trips anymore. If you remember, pre-COVID, we would all get in a vehicle or arrive to the site and then enter the property to make an assessment. We are not currently doing that during COVID. We did ask both parties, and they've provided substantial photographs from their viewpoint. So that's after COVID. We probably will start to go back out in the field and look at projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah. In comparison to a lot of the projects that come before us and also in consideration of the density of the neighborhood, this is really a very modest proposal. It's the kind of proposals that I like to see that you would think would be non-controversial. Unfortunately, that's not the case. But I can see a reason not to support this project going forward.
I'd like to add to that, that going around the block, the neighbor is directly in front of or behind a driveway that gives a view of the Monterey Bay 180 degrees. And the people who are building it, it's just a one-story addition. And modest, and it fits the lot. That's my opinion. As far as not being able to sell during this pandemic time, this has actually been quite an active period for real estate purchases and sales, surprisingly so. And so I see no reason to approve the appeal. And I think that the ARC was absolutely right in approving the project to begin with.
Thanks, Sandy.
This is Haunton. So, you know, to a certain degree, I don't mean to be mean. We don't care about selling houses. We don't care about those issues. That's not our, we're here to make decisions that are individually based, that, you know, neighbor, impacts the neighbors. But financial decisions, fiscal impact, that's not what we do. We don't deal with those. We deal with, you know, is this a project that is good for the neighborhood? Is it appropriate for the neighborhood? Is it, you know, what's bad about it? What's not bad about it? Unfortunately, in this situation, I mean, I, I'm sorry to say that the city screwed up and gave, didn't give notice because I don't think we would be here if they had gotten, given notice and it would have just been done. I mean, this is one of those things that I cannot believe has actually spent, taken any more time than just getting it done. I am, I feel very, very bad for the applicant that they are having to go through, jumping through these hoops. I see this as being completely appropriate. I see this as being incredibly minor, what do I want to say? Remodel and minor impact to anybody other than the people who own the house, which will make a great difference for them. So I am strongly in favor of denying the appeal. And, you know, I would, the quicker, I will stop talking so that we can get to a vote. And I would move that we deny the appeal, even just so that we can, they can get moving forward as quick as they possibly can.
We have a motion. I don't know if we finished discussion, but we have a second.
I'll second that.
We have a second. And then further, any discussion? I just want to make a comment. I think that the design is very reasonable for the neighborhood. I think it's, it's very in tune with what the neighborhood looks like. I also appreciate that a neighbor is inconvenienced by the lack of notice and other little considerations. But in some of the decisions that the Planning Commission makes for a view is the major issue. I don't see that here. I just see it's an inconvenience, but I don't see anything overwhelming. So based on that, could I have any, well, any other comments? Then let's ask for a roll call.
Sure.
We need a motion.
We already had a motion, a second.
Well, that's right. Excuse me. I'm just used to having a motion as different from argument.
So he included it, but that's okay. So could we have the vote, please?
Sure. Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Let me clarify, to deny the appeal.
Thank you. Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
Is this appealable?
Within 10 days, you may make an appeal to the city council. Thanks, Haunton.
Also, the motion passed 7-0.
Yes, it did. Any other questions? Okay, then let's move on. I believe, can we have a second issue, a second project to discuss and the staff report?
We do. Kristi Savdo will be making the presentation this afternoon.
Hi, this is, good evening. This is Kristi Savdo. I'm an associate planner with the city of Monterey. I am going to be pulling up my presentation here, and then I'll share my screen. I forgot the order. Here we go. Okay. Okay, here we go. Okay, this is 420 Tyler Street. Applicant Todd Howland submitted an application to allow a nightclub. That's under use classification Restaurant Major at 420 Tyler Street. Staff recommends approval of the use permit to allow Restaurant Major nightclub. The project is located at 420 Tyler Street. It's located on the same property as the Golden State Theater. You'll see it highlighted here in orange. The general plan, land use designation is commercial, and the zoning is planned community. It's in the downtown specific plan, and it has the H1 designation, which I'll talk about in a minute. So again, it's located in the downtown specific plan area. This nightclub, proposed nightclub use requires a use permit. It falls under the Restaurant Major Use. Going over city code regulations for the, in the commercial districts, 65 decibels is the maximum allowable noise. And there's also time and duration noise standards. So this is designated H1 Landmark Overlay Zoning. Again, because it's on the same property as the Golden State Theater, you'll see that it's located where the circle is, just in front of, really behind the theater, because the front edge of the theater is along Alvarado. Here, you can see the 420 Tyler, the proposed nightclub, right behind the Golden State Theater. So the proposed use is a nightclub. The hours would be Monday through Thursday, 5:00 p.m. to midnight, Friday and Saturday, 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And there would be a bar serving alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages with small plates of food. They are looking to obtain a type 48 liquor license with ABC, that they need a use permit first. They have a proposed dance floor. It's about 300 square feet of dance space. Live entertainment would include a DJ in the evenings from 9:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. Live music performance, mostly Sundays, between 11:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Here's the proposed floor plan. You can see the dance floor, the bar with the stools, and then there's seating area with booths kind of behind the bar. You have your restrooms and hallway to the kitchen. So there would be a maximum of six employees at any one time, and that would include two bartenders, one bar back, a door person slash security personnel, and also security personnel inside. A security plan has been submitted. It would include security personnel, the installation of four security cameras, three inside and one outside, the installation of a remote-controlled doorbell, an electric strike door lock installed by American Lock &amp; Key, requiring a password for entry, an ID scanner to be used at the door to check and save IDs for 30 days. And all staff will attend ABC lead training, which includes topics such as ABC and local law enforcement responsibilities, laws, the law and minors, how to check identification, managing patron consumption of alcohol, topics like that. And that was something that the city of Monterey Police required, and they did review the security plan, and they are satisfied with it. Under the downtown specific plan, there's no minimum parking requirement. The applicant has submitted a noise study, and it was prepared by Dr. Jim Baris, Ph.D. principal with Sonics ESD, and they are located in Monterey. The study includes, or concludes that the proposed nightclub would meet the minimum noise standards for commercial districts, provided that certain recommendations are implemented. And as I noted in the agenda report, not all recommendations in the noise study are required. I did talk to Dr. Jim Baris, and there are, the recommendations I'm listing out are the ones that are required to meet the 65 decibels. And I'm going to list them here, too. So here are the recommendations, and they're added as special conditions of approval in the resolution. So their entrance door, you see, there's a gap here. So that undercut door should be closed with a drop-down threshold door bottom and the frame perimeter smoke seal gasket to be replaced with and changed to a silo. and the frame perimeter smoke seal gasket to be replaced with and changed to a silicone or neoprene bulb gasket. The windows, they're single pane on the front windows. They're recommended to be covered with heavy fabric drapes with a solid opaque vinyl backing. The front door should be closed at all times, but if the front door is left open for any reason, they need to limit maximum interior noise levels to 65, 70 decibels maximum. And just noise standards shall be met at all times. And that's, those four recommendations are added as special conditions of approval. The proposed use meets the objectives of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the planning commission zone, or I'm sorry, the plant community zone, and that the project is consistent with the downtown specific plan. A major restaurant major nightclub is an allowed use with a use permit. The nightclub use is defined as allowing the sale of beer, wine, or distilled spirits with live entertainment. The proposed use and the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will be consistent with the general plan and that nightclub is a commercial use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use, and will not be detrimental to the properties or improvements in the vicinity. Furthermore, a noise study has been prepared, confirming that proposed use will meet the city's noise standards. And the proposed use will comply with any specific condition required for that use. The project will comply with standard and special conditions of approval for the nightclub use. Our staff recommends approval of the use permit to allow a restaurant major nightclub. That concludes my presentation. I didn't see if the applicant had signed on to Google Meet or if they're planning on calling in.
So the applicant would need to call in?
I have a question.
Yeah, any questions, Steph?
Yeah, I have a question, Steph.
Sure.
Christie, where is the nearest residential use or mixed use involving residential? How many feet away? Very much problems we've had with the bear and bull or bull and bear, the old mucky duck down on Alvarado.
Yeah, that's a good question. I may have to get back to you on that.
Christie, if you bring up aerial photograph, I think I can show you where that the nearest residential use is.
Okay.
So the nearest residential use is where the old Cafe Trieste was located, which is nearby. So if you can just maybe put on the satellite photo in the bottom left corner.
Oh, sorry. Try that again.
And maybe you can put your cursor on the project site. Directly to the north is the Turn 12 Bar and Grill, which is a commercial use. And that's the big square building at the corner of Franklin and Tyler that Christie has her cursor on. On Alvarado Street is the Monterey Church. That's at the corner of Alvarado and East Franklin. Between that, the Monterey Church and the Golden State, Golden State Theater is Sir Burgers. And above Sir Burgers, I believe there are two residential units that face Alvarado Street. On the other side, where the Hellem Tobacco and Wine Shop has been located, I know they recently went out of business there, I believe, so I don't think they are there. And then directly to the south is the Epsilon Fine Greek Food, which is a restaurant only. So the only nearby residential unit is Sir Burgers located right there where Christie's cursor is.
How about the other side of Tyler?
Sure. On the other side of Tyler is Bank of America. So I think we're all familiar with that. It has a large parking lot. And then on Bonifacio, we have a restaurant. We used to have a dry cleaner that I think is empty right now, and we have Harris Bakery.
So I would think that there's a great deal of space between the fur burger and the proposed use. Golden State Theater is going to absorb most of that sound anyway. So it's not going to get from where the proposed restaurant is to the fur burger.
Yeah, and that's what the noise study confirms as well.
Right. I just wanted to make sure.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What are the normal, what are the normal closing hours for bars in downtown Monterey? Is it two or is it one?
Kim, can you speak to that with the, kind of the, the normal?
Yeah, so I, I mean, the latest are late night are allowed as at 2:00, 2:00 AM. They usually start wrapping up between 1:00 and 2:00, but they have to be closed by 2:00. So there are a few bars that have that timeframe on Alvarado Street. Like Crown and Anchor, that's located on Franklin. Chibos down the street. And the bar that's adjacent to Rosine's, which I can't believe I forgot the name of right now, but
Britannia Arms.
Britannia Arms, thank you. And then Mucky Duck just went out of business.
Oh. Bull and Bear.
Bull and Bear, whatever.
Bull and Bear.
You know, I did not think that Helms went out of business. I thought that the Monterey Music moved out of their huge, huge space that goes street to street and moved in next to the theater, but I didn't think Helms went.
I think you're right. I think it's the music store that's right there.
Yeah. I think that Wyatt, the man who owns Helms, I think he's doing very well.
Oh, good.
Christie, I have a quick question for you. Thanks for your excellent report, first of all. It's really thorough and, and well done. So the, the regulation of the city regarding noise is 65 dB. But some, some of the, one of the conditions in the resolution talks about 65 to 70. You know what? I don't mean to nitpick. It's just that if this ever comes in the future and somebody starts using those little boxes, they'll want to know which one to use, 65 or 70.
Okay, so let me know where you're referring to again?
Oh, okay, I have to find it.
It's in the report or the resolution?
It's in the resolution.
I recall seeing it.
It might have to do with, let's see.
Oh, here it is. It's 6C.
Okay. So you know how I was talking about, there is another part of the code that talks about the transient noise, like the sudden rise in noise. I'm sorry?
When you open the door?
Yeah. And so there are special noise standards for those times. And that's what this condition is referring to. And it came from the noise study. So I didn't, I didn't come up with it. The expert is the one that drafted the recommendations.
Okay. So I just wanted to bring up that issue just to avoid any confusion in case somebody actually, you know, insists on, on a a noise level. So I guess if they were, let's say somebody in the future was complaining and somebody then was, actually had a noise device to check these levels, that, that's interior noise.
Right.
So any place inside of this establishment that they would be expected, really 70 is the limit. I mean, it says 65 to 70. I guess that's the source of my question is how come there are these different numbers?
So it is because of that other section of the code. And the 65 decibel limit is an exterior noise level limit.
Right.
And isn't that at the property line?
At the property line, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I, I have a question. I'm looking at page 82. It's the, it's the letter from Savvy to the city of Monterey.
Okay.
In the second paragraph, it says one to three person live acts, mostly on Sundays between 1, oh, between 11 and 3. Is that 3:00 PM or 3:00 AM?
I did confirm that. It's 3:00 PM.
Okay, good.
And he had different overall hours in this letter too, and I asked him to kind of give me the days and the specific times, and so those are reflected in this report.
Yeah. Okay, I have another question. This, this building is an H1 building, H1 zone, which means it's historic. Has, has the, the HPC taken a look at this? Are they going to permit a bar in a, in a historic building?
So the H1 would come into play if they have any exterior alterations that they'd be proposing. And they're not proposing any exterior alterations at this point, but if they do, that they would require, be required to get an historic permit.
Okay.
And then the historic
So it's not a problem.
I have any other questions from the commission? I have a question. What's the, maybe I missed it. What's the maximum occupancy?
They are going to have to meet fire code and there is a condition in here that says they are going to have to meet the 2019 fire code. So at the time that they get their building permits, they'll have to abide by the fire code, which would have those occupancy limits.
So we don't know at this point?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that.
Okay, now in COVID-19, it's not going to be opening in the short term, right?
Yeah, I didn't discuss with them what their opening plans are during this time.
It's a, the businesses, bars are not currently allowed to be open and nightclub, so it'll have to be when hopefully our health situation changes and additional businesses are reopened.
I was wondering if they're going to try to do a parking lot situation. That's why I ask. Thank you. If no other questions, we have any comment from the applicant?
Great. For the public, the phone number to call in is 831-582-6500. When you call in, please move away from your television so I can unmute you and we can hear you. Once again, the phone number is 831-582-6500. We don't currently have any callers, but it's about a 10 to 15 second delay. So we'll just wait a few seconds.
Okay. Okay, Kim, if you'll let us know if a call comes in, but let's open it up for comments by the commission.
I'll make one, a couple of comments. One is, I think that the Locktefalves should really be thanked for keeping the theater alive and viable and now adding to the entertainment value of the theater in a club behind on Tyler Street. And I note that the noise standards that apply to this project are the same noise standards that applied to Bull and Bear. It's just that this one is inside, so it isn't going to create an outdoor public nuisance. I think it's a great idea.
Thanks, Sandy. Any other question, comments?
Yeah, this is Terri Latassa agreeing with Sandy. This appears to be a really good use permit application. As opposed to other situations with bars in town where residences were closer, as Steve Milich questioned. This one appears to be pretty well buffered from residences and it seems very appropriate.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I'll solicit a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move to approve 420 Tyler Street use permit application UP 200082 to allow a nightclub restaurant major with the conditions that had been stated in the staff report. It's a long list of conditions.
Any other second?
I'll second that.
Second by Dan Fletcher. Any other comments? Last for rocall.
Sure. Chair Brassfields.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. And the next is information or reports and staff comments.
This is Kim with the community development department. One exciting bit of news is the architectural review committee last Wednesday unanimously approved the Ohana Project located at 6 Lower Rags Hill. So that development team indicates that they will be preparing construction drawings and trying to obtain their building permit this fall, and they're looking forward to an early January start construction date. So that's a really exciting project for our community, and I thought you might want to be updated. Additionally, on September 30th, we will be having a study session with the city council on marijuana. At a fairly recent city council meeting, the council has requested that the planning commissioner consider more than just allowing testing facilities. But we're a little bit unclear right now what more is. Are they talking grow facilities? Are they talking about dispensaries? Clearly testing facilities similar to what was approved out in Ryan Ranch. So you may want to tune in on September 30th. We'll be asking the city council for more information about marijuana. It was fairly clear to me that that is becoming a fairly high priority for our council. So you will probably start to see city staff work on marijuana policies and concepts and be bringing those to the planning commission to change our zoning regulations once we get input. So with that, I have no further update.
Okay, any commissioner comments?
No comments from me.
Well, I think marijuana requires a lot of water, doesn't it?
We're not growing it.
Depends on the use, right? If it's a retail dispensary, it's probably that, not that much different than a regular retail. If it's a grow facility, the water district's actually established water calculations and credit requirements for those facilities. I haven't paid that close of attention to them, but I know they came out about a, over a year ago because some of our adjacent cities are allowing grow facilities in their communities.
Thank you, Kim.
Any other comments? I have a question to Kim. We just had a project that discusses noise. That was during the era of Bull and Bear. We always had questions coming to the commission. And somewhere along the line, I was under the impression that somewhere down the line, we were going to be discussing changes in the noise ordinance. And are we going anywhere on that, Kim?
The conference will automatically end. So you bring up this, the planning offices work program. What's difficult about that right now is we are getting so many new priorities. And the council realized this a few meetings ago, and at our last city council meeting, our city manager's office prepared a list of what all the various departments are working on. And I believe that the city manager will be hosting a workshop with the city council in later September to ask them to prioritize our work program items. later September to ask them to prioritize our work program items. And right now, I don't even think noise, the noise ordinance is on the list in comparison to other priorities. Eviction, warenteriums, rent control, marijuana, there's, and I can send you all that council report as a follow up so you can see. You'll quickly identify the ones that are, are yours. The big item that I'm concerned that we're not making any progress on is our local coastal program. And we are shifting and responding to affordable housing needs and we're making huge progress in that area. But we're not able to finish our local coastal program. So there are, there are priorities or decisions that need to be made there.
Thanks, Kim. If I don't hear any other questions or comments, I'll say it's time to adjourn. Bye, folks.